Ready, Mark?
Guys, ready?
That's how it was when I got here. I just never changed it.
Call a meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
Mr. McKee, would you like to lead?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all our uniformed and non-uniformed people serving our country abroad and here. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight. We have, do we have some announcements? I guess we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief with announcements tonight. I just want to remind everyone that March is colon cancer awareness month. Where am I paying tonight for it? As everyone knows, I'm a fortunate survivor. So it's really important that we go out and get our screenings, or if you're having any symptoms, that you go to the doctor immediately. I just saw a report today where the American Cancer Society is recommending a colonoscopy at age 45 now. But it's, I know the insurance companies fight it, but it's really important. I was, I was one of the lucky ones that went to the doctor when I showed up. So, just a reminder, schedule your colonoscopy. Not a bad idea to get it done before springtime. That's, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Mary?
I have announcements for the library. March is Census Month. Everyone counts, and the library is here to answer any questions you have or to help you fill out the census form online. Please call 215-672-4362 for questions. Upcoming programs, we have over 60 programs happening in March. Please check the website or phone the library for more information or to register. There are adult programs, Monday in March at 3:00 PM, Employment Series. Join our partners at the YWCA, The Home Jobs, search skills, including resume and cover letter writing, interview techniques, and job search tips. Saturday, March 22nd at 2:00, Women in History Speaker Series, Vera Atkins, a WWII Intelligent Office and key member of Britain's Special Executive Operations, set up by Winston Churchill. Tickets are $10 and available at the door. This benefits the Friends of Warminster Library. Youth programs, Wednesday, March 18th at 4:30, Churchville Nature Center Series, Reptile Smiles. This is an all grades program. Bring snakes and reptiles to the library for education about our scaly friends. Monday, March 16th at 4:30 PM, Pot of Gold Slime Make and Take for grades 2 to 6. Learn to make St. Patrick's Day-themed slime. Teen programs, Sunday, March 15th at 2:30, a teen DIY melted crayon art. Make one-of-a-kind art with old crowns and art canvas. Sunday, March 22nd at 6:00 PM is Teen Nerf Night for grades 6 to 12. Jonas Santa, the library closes for strategy and zombies. The library, your battlefield. All equipment and Nerf guns will be provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Judy?
Yeah, I have Ben Wilson, Senior Center. March 12th, they're having a show called the Sherlock Holmes Return. And March 18th, A Trip to Caesar's, Atlantic City, Yesterday Once More. And for information about those, you can call 215-672-8380. On April 2nd, they're having a senior expo as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Kathy?
It's Mr. Chair. I have some announcements on behalf of our Parks and Recreation Department. The annual egg scramble is sold out. Thank you all for who registered and our sponsor, Penn Community Bank. Next big event, our favorite, Rubber Ducky Regatta. Tickets are on sale. Duck tickets are the 25th anniversary of the Rubber Ducky Regatta, and they're on sale online at the rec or library. Tickets are $5 a duck, or five ducks for $20. The event's sponsored by Quaint Oak Bank. It's a fun event for the entire family. Pack a picnic, lunch, and go for a few hours. It's a lot of fun for the kids. Upcoming programs with Parks and Recreation. Must pre-register for all these programs. How to Create a Butterfly Garden, Tuesday, March 10th. It's free. Munchkin Crafts, Wednesday, March 11th at 10:00 AM for two- to three-year-olds with a parent. $9 a child. Ballroom Dancing, Wednesday, March 11th, April 29th at 6:45 PM. CPR and AED Training, Saturday, March 21st, 8:30 AM to 12:30 PM. Rock Climbing, Basic Youth Family, starting March 24th. Family Planetarium Event, Monday, April 6th. That's free. Kindergarten Readiness Parenting Program, Tuesday, April 7th at 6:30 PM. That's also free. A Bird Walk is scheduled for Saturday, April 18th at 7:30 AM, and that is also free of cost. Community Yard Sale, Saturday, April 18th, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Warminster Community Park. Vendors are $25 for a 20-by-20 space. Go through your cupboards and closets and maybe sell some things on the side, too. That's always, always fun. And pick up some items that you might like also. Dog licenses in Bark Park can be purchased at the Parks and Recreation Office. All dogs must be licensed in the state of Pennsylvania over the age of three months. Friends at Warminster Park, Hometown Hero banners are available. Friends at Community Park invite all residents to participate in Hometown Hero Banner program honoring our local veterans. Banners are displayed along Veterans Way in Warminster Community Park from April to December. For an application or more information, www.friendsofwarminsterparks.org, or stop by the Parks and Rec office. Discount tickets are also available for the movies, sold year-round for $9.50. Discount ski lifts. Current prices are listed at the Parks and Rec office. Parks are open from sunrise to sunset. After dusk, you must have a permit or risk being fined. For more information on any of these programs, contact the Parks and Recreation Office at 215-443-5428, or visit the township website. Thank you very much. That's it, Mr. Chair.
When did you say the Rubber Ducky Regatta is?
That is...
Seventeenth?
May 17.
Oh, May 17. It's all listed on my sheet. Thank you for letting me know. May 17.
And I do believe you have a requirement for...
Yeah, it's tradition, tradition that new board members go in the water after the ducks. I look forward to seeing you.
All right.
Can you in there, Mr. Chairman?
Have their boots on, ready to go.
Keep looking.
Thought I heard that correctly.
I send my ambassador every year. She's not here, my wife. I send my ambassador in every year. I work the rope line. Look forward to seeing you guys in the water.
Yep. Looking forward to it. And speaking of dogs, I'd like to remind everyone, and I'm a dog lover and a dog owner as well, but as you take your dogs around the township or in your parks or all along your walking route in your neighborhood, please remember to clean up after your dog. Be respectful for your neighbors, yourself, and the township. Thank you. A couple, one last thing is the new businesses. I'd like to welcome Bath Authority, 645 Eagle Boulevard.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Metro East Sports Training Center, is it? At 1386 West Street Road. And M&amp;H Custom Framing and Gallery, 318 York Road. Welcome to the township, and we wish you the greatest success. All right. What's next? I believe it's presentations. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Oh, yes. We had an executive session just prior to tonight's meeting to discuss matters of litigation in real estate. Now we can go to presentations, and I'd like to welcome the Girl Scouts, and we'll let you guys go, you girls, go first.
Hello, my name is Cameron.
And my name is Shaglet.
And we are Brownie Girl Scouts from Troop 2018 of the Sentinel Spirit Service Unit.
Every winter, we participate in the animal sale of delicious Girl Scout cookies to help us own money for the many experiences and service projects a troop has to offer.
This year, we will go, we will go camping, learn archery, explore caves, experience what life was like in medieval times, explore our creativity, take a trip on a pirate ship, supply food to those in need, and brighten the day for some local foster childrens, to name a few.
Not only does a cookie sale allow us to do many things, we also learn valuable skills such as goal-setting, decision-making, money management, people skills, and business ex- ethics?
This year's sale runs from January 16th to March 12th, so there is one week, only one week left to stock up on your favorite kinds.
Our troop has 26 goals. Set a goal to sell 6,000 boxes of cookies. With one week to go, we already surpassed that goal, and we are hoping to reach our new goal of 8,000 boxes.
We cannot have reached our goal without the help we received from the community. We would especially like to take this opportunity to tell all the local businesses that were kind enough to allow us to set up in the front of their stores. The sale, the sales from these booths have allowed us to sell more than we could ever could have on our own.
This coming weekend, we will be set up in multiple locations. On Saturday, our troop will be at Advanced Auto from 1:00 to 3:00, and one way from 12:30 to 6:30 PM. And on Sunday, we will be at Wawa from 12:00 to 2:00 PM.
Make sure to tell your friends and family to stop by and see us to get some cookies, or they are going to have to wait a whole nother year until you get, until you can get some more.
Thank you to the Warminster Board of Supervisors for letting us attend this evening. Please enjoy these cookies as a token of our appreciation for all you do for town.
Thank you. Holy smokes. Oh, Jesus. Thank you. Sure.
You're so nice. Thank you so much.
So, thank you again. So, it's a great organization, and we, we all definitely hope that you reach your goal of 8,000, is it now? Wow. That's, that's incredible. So has everyone here purchased cookies? Should we take a moment, or has everyone already? Is there anyone left, needs to purchase?
Great salesmanship.
All right, great. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I wanted to, I wanted to mention that one of our former supervisors, Ellen Jarvis, is here with the Girl Scout troop. That was granddaughter. Good to have you back in the building, Ellen.
Yes, thank you for your service as well. It's a great organization. Please support, please support the Girl Scouts. Buy some cookies.
We'll be outside just if you need any more.
Okay.
Use a glass of milk.
Thank you. All right, next up, presentation on our 2020 road program. And our Public Works Director, Eric Hines.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hi. Thanks for having me here to talk about the road program for this year. So, this year, we'll be resurfacing roads located in Sector 5 in the township. Here's our sector map. Just to remind everybody, kind of why the township is broken up into sectors like that, or blocks, it's like for organizational purposes. And for analyzing, when you're going to get detailed, analyzing these roads in detail, it just makes it a lot easier to do it by sector. And that way, you're able to determine which sectors have the highest percentage of poorly ranked roads, and then you can develop a schedule based on that.
Okay.
How well you can read that. There's 15 roads up there in Sector 5. Sector 5 is where we are right now. It's the south-central part of the township. A lot of these roads are kind of in this direction from where we're standing right now. Can you go back one? Sorry about that. I just wanted to point out that total miles over there this year is 3.54 miles of roadway. The Pazer rating over there on the right side is the road ranking system. It's a relatively simple system of ranking roads. I can give you a copy of the Pazer system ranking. You know, it's basically a 1 to 10, one being the worst. And some of those number fours in there, in the green, are actually a little closer to three or lower at this point. And also, I wanted to point out that this year, we're going to be mandated to install 64 new ADA-compliant curb ramps in this sector, which is an awful lot. It's the most I've seen.
And not to interrupt you, but that's an unfunded, unfunded mandate.
It is. Yeah, we'll talk about that in a second slide. Go ahead. Just the overview I mentioned. It'll be 5,600 to 6,000 tons of asphalt that Public Works will install after the milling sub preps the roads. These roads are off the history map. As far as the paving history map goes, they're just not on there. So, it put, my maps right now show 35 years back, so they're off the grid. They're, they're in terrible shape. The curb ramps were mentioned, required by law. You know, there's strict rules about triggers for ADA ramps, so when you're resurfacing anywhere in an intersection, so 64 is an awful lot of ramps. The cost of the ramps this year will account for 40% of the total budget for roads this year, so that's the highest I've seen yet. Okay. There's the map. We try to, when we go into sectors, the way the road program works, it's really important to attack these roads in the worst areas and keep it relatively close, and not travel from sector to sector, or each end to each end, because you can get the most done. If you wind up jumping around in the township, it will cost you through the contractors and also in-house, what they call mobilization. If you're moving stuff around, you're really not getting anything done, and you're paying the cost of mobilization. There's the ADA ramps. There are a lot of dots up there. Okay. So, we started this road program in 2017. It's been going really well. We treated Sector 4 in 2017. This year, Sector 5. Now, you know, just because we're hitting Sector 5 as hard as we can this year, doesn't mean there aren't some more roads to do in Sector 5. And, you know, we cycle through this program. It's a five-year program, and then start all over again, go back into the sectors that are the worst. The, you know, the conditions of these roads change, so the program is updated every year. These roads are inspected again every year, and then things could change. Okay. That's the road program.
Go ahead, Mark. Just some, not questions, but comments. First of all, you guys do a terrific job. Since, since you've been here and our crew, it's been day and night with, with the program. But just for the edification of the folks, how we pay for this?
Yes.
This is from liquid fuels money that we get from the state.
Yep.
And that determines how much road paving we do.
That's true. And liquid fuels funding, I had to learn about when I came here in 2016. It's the gas tax from, you know, everybody drives a car, everybody pays gas tax at the pump. And then, you know, the people in Harrisburg decide, based on the size of your municipality and the amount of miles of roads you have, how much of a liquid fuels allocation you'll get from the government each year. So, in Warminster, we use our liquid fuels funding, which is a decent amount of money, but we do use it for new vehicles in our fleet qualify, anything snow removal-related, including salt, and anything else. Traffic signal repairs or upgrades also come out of liquid fuels. And then, road program, anything related to road improvements. All liquid fuels funding.
Because I know we had a year, I guess, three or so years ago, where we had a salt event every weekend. Ton of overtime, ton of salt, and we ended up only paving like a mile of road that year because we didn't, we had no money left in the fund.
That can happen.
Don't say it. Don't say it.
We'd like to repave the entire township, but we just don't have the resource to do it.
And we could do it.
You guys do a terrific job.
If we have the resources, we could do it, so.
Yeah, so we are fortunate this year thus far. So hopefully, that covers some of these unfunded mandated ramps, although, which are a necessity.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, I don't, I don't say we don't do it, but hopefully, we can put some of that in with, if we continue the winner the way we're going. I don't want to say it.
Just last year, we were also able to do like a cooperative project with the Warminster Authority. You know, the Warminster Authority's replacing lots of water mains in the township. They're required to do road restoration. And then, last year, the authority asked if we would help by actually doing the paving ourselves to save a lot of money, and that's what we did. So, you know.
And you're going to continue doing that with the...
Absolutely. It worked out really well, and it gets us roads paved that we didn't have on the plan.
Good.
So, it's terrific.
Do you have any supplemental work on the schedule this year, or do you just take that as it goes?
I have lots of supplemental work. I have a big list always at my side.
Yeah.
For supplemental work, yes.
And I noticed that, I want to thank you again for a job well done, you and your crew. You do a phenomenal job in the township. And I know that sometimes there could be areas that are crisis areas, where there's, you know, maybe where children are going to school, or what have you with the roads. And you guys get out there really fast. And all the residents say that your response time is great. You do a great job. We just want to thank you.
That's all we need from them. Thank you. Thanks to our crews. They're terrific. All we need is that phone call, and then communications there.
Thanks again, Eric.
Yep. Thank you, Eric.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next on the presentation agenda is the Five Ponds New Rate Structure. Kevin, welcome.
Thank you very much for having me, everyone. I'm with you on the winter.
Don't say it.
We're all together on that.
Yes.
What I have in front of you this evening is a proposed rate increase to three rates.
I'm sorry, a lot of people at home may not know what your role is. Do you want to maybe start with that, Kevin?
Yes, sure.
Thanks.
Mike Geter is normally here, and Mike's out of town, so I'll have to handle it. I'm the Vice President of Spirit Golf Management, and I have been involved directly with Five Ponds since 2017, beginning of 2017. So, I oversee the golf operations throughout the entire company. So, thank you for that. So, our green fees at Five Ponds, we're in a good position. We're happy to say revenue's been climbing each of the last couple of years. And what we want to do this year is increase the rate by $2, three specific rates. The weekday rack rate, the weekend rack rate, and the league rate. So, what we want to do, this is part of our every-year annual process, where we'll go back, do our due diligence, check our round counts and our revenue from each year, see where we can make improvements, and see where there's holes to fill and things we can add. So, after that was done this year, we found these areas can be increased. So, what we're looking to do is add $2 to each rate, and the amount of rounds that these three rates involve make up a little bit of, a little less than half of our rounds for the year. So, we're not, we're not doing an across-the-board rate increase, three specific rate increases. The league rate specifically will go from $18 to $20. And that's a, that's a special case because we have leagues at Five Ponds, Monday through Thursday in the evenings, and we are now about maxed out. We can't fit another league. We can't fit another player, Monday through Thursday evenings. That's because of the landscape in golf in Bucks, Montgomery County, has changed in the last couple of years. Line Kilm Golf Course is closed. Center Square has closed. Upper Dublin Golf Course is closed, and a couple of driving ranges have closed as well. Everybody's coming to Five Ponds. It's a great problem to have. We are maxing out our tee sheet many days. We're seeing that early this winter-spring, this early spring as it is now in 2020. We've already had maxed tee sheets, and this time, that's a little bit unheard of. We're maxing out our daylight. So, that is something we're happy about. So, the league rate, we can't increase more leagues, but we can increase the rate at this point, and it's still an excellent value for people that play in our leagues. And this is something, this is prepaid golf. This is something that we book out for the season, and that's something that we're, we're happy about. So, this rate has been talked about and floated around and discussed, and within our company, and we've done all the math. We've done all the increases. Hopefully, you see in front of you, you have the paperwork there. This could be upwards of $35,000 in revenue, should our rates stay flat. We expect our rates, if our rounds stay flat, we expect our rounds to go up. With the league that we added, in league alone, we expect to add 2,000 rounds over the course of the year, just in the league rate. So, we do expect those rounds to go up, and with the increase, we expect our revenue to go up, and that is something we're, we're looking to do. I'm happy to entertain any questions or comments, and take any feedback that you have.
You go ahead. I have a few. Maybe, maybe you could give us an, an update on the irrigation system. It's been a good winter, so it's probably been good for the crew working on that.
Kurt Jensen, our golf course superintendent, is here to discuss just that. It has been a great winter.
My name's Kurt Jensen. I've been at Five Ponds since 2016. Started just before Kevin did. We are putting a new irrigation system in this winter. The main lines are 99% done. The last thing to do is the bridge at 12. They are waiting on the brackets so they can attach the pipe to the bridge. Soon as that is in, the plan is to start pushing some water into the system, because they have to flush every head that they install. Any plastic pieces that happen to get into the pipe, they pull everything out, flush water through it. 10 green complexes are done. The greens hope to be finished within the next two weeks, and then move on to tees and fairways. When tees and fairways, when they start doing that, it goes a lot faster, because you're going basically 75 feet, put one head in, 75 feet, one head. Where the greens complexes, it's nine to 10 heads per green. So, it's a lot tighter, a lot more digging. So, they're moving along. The weather's been good. We lost some time there in early February, a lot of rain, but they're moving along.
Excellent. Okay. When, when do you think they'll be finished?
It'll probably be mid-April.
Oh, so it'll be good to go for this season with it?
Oh, yeah. We'll, we'll have water at the greens before April 1st.
Right.
Which is perfect, because that's when I aerify the greens, and, you know, the water would help, so.
Excellent. Good. Glad to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I don't have any, any questions. I mean, you pretty much covered everything there, Mark, so anyone else have any questions?
I just have one more, the quick commercial for the golf course, because it is the best golf course in Bucks County. It definitely isn't. These guys do a tremendous job of keeping it up. Tremendous. Are you doing the Nine and Dines again this year?
We will, yes.
For those that are interested in that, it's a Nine and Dine. My wife and I played. It's a lot of couples. You play nine holes and have dinner afterwards. It's, it's a great, it's a great deal. I'll definitely be signing up for that.
Yeah, well, we're planning more and more social events.
Yeah, it was really, really nice. We really enjoyed it.
So, excellent. Thank you. We, we're thrilled to have Kurt as our superintendent. He's done an incredible job since, since he's been here. So, we're, we're lucky to have him, and our golf course shows what a good job he's doing. So, everything at Five Ponds is on the rise. The irrigation system, the grill has been renovated. The golf courses, golf shop has been cleaned up. The grounds are fantastic. So, everything is really kind of coming together, so we're thrilled with where everything's at right now.
Yeah, and I know the, the accommodations are, are great, too. I think you're doing a good job there as well. I know our tax collector, Bobby Loftus, mentioned that, and we had an EAC meeting there for all the Bucks and Montgomery County.
Sure.
Environmental Advisory Councils, and you guys are doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, get into land use matters, public hearings and ordinances. Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item for you to consider, Item A, would be Authorization to Advertise of Ordinance 762, which is the zoning ordinance for the boards. If you recall, this did go through the Planning Commission last year. They did make several recommendations, quite a bit of recommendations, working with the staff. This was transmitted to this board, as well as to the Bucks County Planning Commission. In your packet, there is a number of recommendations that were just received very recently from Bucks County Planning Commission. Those have not been incorporated into the version you're seeing right now. You can further delay this and incorporate some of them if you choose, or you can come back later and still make another tweak to the ordinance. The only change that was made to the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, that came from the Planning Commission was outlined in a memo which you received from Amanda, dealing with the setbacks for the outlined in a memo which you received from Amanda, dealing with the setbacks for the, for the recreational vehicles. Specifically, that eliminates the five-foot setback from the property line, the front yard. But other than that, it is, as was passed or recommended by the Planning Commission. This would be for advertisement only, and you would approve it at your next meeting if you're so inclined.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I have one. Excuse me, I have one. So, let me get this straight. The Planning Commission recommended that we keep, we impose a five-foot setback in front yard, but we're not going to. We're going to go to zero setback if we adopt this.
If, if the RV was on paving.
Right, or stone.
Or, or stone in their driveway.
Including front yard.
Well, that's, everyone's driveway isn't the front yard.
I mean, they could actually put some stone on their front lawn and put it on the front lawn.
I don't know that you can do that without getting a, a permit or variance, correct? I mean, if you're going to do that, you're doing that illegally. Am I correct? Okay, well then, that's, that's a, that's a horse of another color, right? And then there were, that memo from the Bucks County Planning Commission came in, was dated yesterday. We should be looking at this anyway, and updating this not just once a year, but several times a year. So, we can certainly update our zoning ordinance more than once a year, and as we see necessary. Any other questions or comments?
Well, this is just the advertisement.
It's just the advertisement. That's correct.
Okay.
And if any, any of our residents have any questions about it or anything, who should they contact?
Well, they can certainly contact my office, and we'll give them the answers as, as best we can.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schuster.
Well. So, the appropriate action would be to make a motion to authorize the advertisement of Ordinance 762.
I'll make the motion.
Second it.
Second. Any other comments? Any from the, from the public?
John Preal, 674 Joseph Avenue. I know neighboring townships, what they did in the past with the ordinance with these campers and vehicles that were parked on the, on their properties. They had them, or made them have them inspected and registered. That's something you guys aren't talking about. If you have a customer, or a person that lives at the house, and have a camper, many of them, and I do tow a lot of them, many of them aren't registered, they're not inspected, and they're just sitting there. And sometimes they're sitting there for 10 years, and that's probably part of the problem. It becomes an eyesore. But I know that Upper South and all makes you have it registered and inspected in order to park it there. So, it might be something you want to consider before you go and switch it up.
Thank you.
It's a good suggestion, John.
Any other public comment? No? All right, seeing none, then we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm a no, Mr. Chairman.
Chair votes aye, 4-1. Thank you. Okay, next, on the land use, Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next ordinance for you to consider is for advertisement only. This would be Ordinance 763, wastewater control disposal. This is a very technical ordinance dealing with what actually can enter our wastewater system. This comes from the EPA via the municipal authority to go ahead and comply with various regulations.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board?
No.
Any questions or comments from the, from the public? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor?
I don't believe there was a.
Whoops, sorry, sorry, my mistake, my mistake. Yeah. So, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, now, we can, any public comment? Sorry, I got ahead of myself. Okay, so, seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, 5-0. Thank you. And next, Mr. Schuster?
And the last ordinance for consideration this evening is for adoption. If you recall, it was the board's desire to change the makeup and somewhat codify the existing practices for the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee. The ordinance, which is Ordinance 761, was duly advertised and is available for adoption this evening.
Okay, so, do we have a motion to adopt Ordinance 761?
Come on, Mr. Chairman.
Second? Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, 5-0. Thank you. All right, now we'll open it up to public comment. Please, when you come up to speak for the record, please give your, your name and full address. Whoever.
John Preal, 674 Joseph Avenue. Of course, we're not going to talk about duty tow tonight, but I have something else that's important that you guys may, may have overlooked over the years, probably because we aren't really sure how it all is supposed to go down. I'm talking about public property and parking on public property. I'm talking about a few things where individuals are using the shopping centers for parking their cars, to operate their businesses, to sell vehicles, which is becoming a nuisance. Again, years back, I posted signs in many of the shopping centers for the township. We did the parking lot enforcement. We cleaned that problem up. The shopping centers have been revamped and redone. Signs have come down. I did some homework on the laws of the, of the state of Pennsylvania, which does include the municipality. Most of the time, from what I understand, or what usually is, you try to take a stand off a position, because it is private property. But you do have a right to have some control of it. I'll give you the example. I had a friend of mine who came to me who said that their daughter parked into Walmart's parking lot and went down the street to the, to the train station and hopped the train. It was my understanding that Walmart had an open policy with their parking lot. They would let tractor-trailer stay there, campers, so people were coming camping, and they would park there overnight, and things like that. So, it comes to be that this tow vendor must have made some kind of an agreement with the management in the parking lot to remove these vehicles. Okay, they took the girl's car out of the township to an unsecured facility that didn't have a fenced-in yard, which is one of the requirements that the state of Pennsylvania says that you need to do. They charged her $310 for the day. We don't have any control of that, because we're not, we're not doing it the right way. In the House Bill, it's House Bill 3051, it says here, inspection of signs. Any municipality may require permitting and inspection of these signs prior to any towing or removal of a vehicle within the municipality. That means that you guys can do maybe an ordinance, state that you, you want a fee for the per, the permit, or the right to put the signs up, to have the tow facility remove the vehicle. That's one thing. So, there's a, there's a revenue source for you there. So, it also says that you must file and keep records with the accept, acceptable local law enforcement agency. It says, "A complete copy of current rates to be charged for such services, a list of locations from which the person or firm tows the vehicle in accordance with the written contract," under the paragraph. It says, "Maintain the place of business." He's supposed to have a copy, too. So, the police department's supposed to have a copy of any parking lot contractor who tows a vehicle from a parking lot, on file. It also states in here that they have 30 minutes upon removal of the vehicle to call the police station to report that they took the car, gives a specific year make and model, color, blah, 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 blah. So, no one reports it stolen and wastes time with the police department.
So, where, where are we going with this, John?
Well, what I'm saying is, we, we probably should be looking at this down the road a piece, because you have, you have township residents that are parking in these parking lots, and are getting their cars removed without, without proper signage and stuff that the township could control.
Okay.
Okay? If you want me to go further, I'll just leave it go.
Actually, John, if you want to send that to me, I'll be happy to take a look at it.
Okay. It's something we should look at.
Yeah, and I don't, and I don't, I don't disagree with that.
Yeah. I mean, we have.
Why don't we have, why don't we have?
I'll forward it to Greg.
And, and he'll have.
You guys look at it.
Mr. Flagler and Amanda, and look at that.
Ellen and I, Ellen and I could, what you could do is then you, I guess you would have to send a letter to the, to each of the people that are doing it, because they have to be, they physically have to have a contract at the police station, somebody here in control of that. So, they know that this vendor is taking that vehicle to this location. And that's state law.
I understand.
So, you have to follow that.
So, then all these property owners would have to put that contract on record, too, that they have a contract.
Well, it would be, yeah, it would be the property owner, they would, it would, it would double back. It would be the tow facility and, and.
And the property owner.
Right, and one would be here on record, and that would say, so, so-and-so's towing company is able to do it. It also states in here, too, just keep in mind, that you can't do predatory towing. They just can't go into the parking lot.
Right.
And rifle two cars off the parking lot. The management company, or whoever's controlling the property, needs to call them first. This is not happening here in a township. Okay?
Thanks, John, because we, you know, we, we weren't, the full board was not aware of that.
Yeah, I understand that, and I'm not blaming anybody, but I'm trying to make you aware of it, so we can look at it, and maybe we can make light of it.
Yeah, well, we definitely, that's something we definitely should be looked at.
I think it's an important thing that we need to look at. I mean, I know you guys don't like the towing stuff, but we've just got to deal with it. I think we should get in the times.
I don't think it has much to do with that, but we, we need to.
It's been lost since 1992.
Yeah. Thanks, John.
Just a comment. I think some of the problem, like you were saying, the young lady parked in Walmart to walk to the train station. I've been hearing from folks lately, there is no parking spots at the train station. You go there in the afternoon, you're not going to find a spot. So, people now are looking for spots to park.
Walmart always had an open parking lot policy.
Right, but if you're not.
And obviously, they're not doing it. And not only are they not doing it now, if they're not doing it, they're not doing it correctly, because the parking lot needs to be posted on the entrance and the exit of each parking lot. If there's no curbing around the, the parking lot, it has to be posted every 25 parking spots with a sign. That has to be marked, "Towaway Zone," and things like that. So, these are things that we need to look at.
Yeah, definitely, for, we, we definitely will look into it. Thank you. Anyone else?
Evening. Chris McSane, 847 Christie Court. Mr. Chairman, I was just wondering, first of all, I'd like to thank Chief Donnelly and all the officers of the township for, you know, their service and tremendous job they do. At this point, I believe that they are working without a contract, and I was just wondering if you could give us an update as far as the negotiations with that.
We're, we're still looking at, negotiations are in their infancy, and I'm not, I'm not going to comment much further than that. Thank you. No timeframe or anything? Uh, no, there's, we don't have a timeframe for that. That would be up to how quickly we can come to an agreement. Thank you. You're welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Bob Welsh, 565 Hollow Avenue, Warmster, PA. First, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Schuster for having that sign installed on Davisville Road. It says, "Welcome to Warmster." Looks great. I saw it the other day. So, say that. Great job. My question is, agenda. Agenda has been posted a week before, the meetings before, and now the agenda's being posted the morning before the meeting. I wanted to know why that's changed, and why not, we're not being notified a week before, so people can read it and be aware of what's happening at town. Thank you.
I don't believe that actually is a change. I believe typically, the day or two before the meeting is when the, the public agenda did go out.
There are lots of times I've looked for the agenda a week before, and it hasn't been there. It's been a day or two before.
It's never been going out a week before.
Traditionally, I think in the past, we've gotten it out by Monday.
And if that was, if that's what the board wants, we'll go wherever timeframe you want to go on. Just there can be changes at, at times. But whatever timeframe, if you give us a due date and say we want it by this particular time, we will adhere to that.
So, I don't believe there's ever been.
There's never been a policy.
A policy or a set date. And, and we like to keep our residents informed with the agenda as, you know, but there are times, especially right now, where things are changing rapidly. So, it's just been one of those, one of those months. So, other than that, thank you for your comment. Anyone else?
Mike Fire, 948 Cornell Drive. It's more of a PSA than anything else. I'm with the Parks and Rec Committee. I just wanted to update something that Mrs. Fresco Ture said earlier. The butterfly garden thing, it's filled. We were at the meeting last night, and I was told that that, that filled up really quick. Apparently, it's a popular thing.
Excellent.
And also, I wanted to remind everybody, there's an invasive plant species cleanup this Saturday, 9:00 a.m. You got a lot of people coming out, but the more the merrier. Bring your clippers, your loppers, everything else. Clubs will be provided. It's from 9:00 to noon, committed to rec building. And then also, I just want to mention, I'm also on the EAC committee, and we're in the process of developing a, like an educational series throughout the year. Still in the early stages, so I'm hoping that each month, myself or somebody else from the committee comes and gets everybody updated, to kind of continue on the way Ken did la, last year, every meeting, with, with all the upcoming events. And then the third thing is more of a personal thing. I'd like to agree that the, the streets guys do a great job in, do a great job in township. And I noticed that my zone was done in 2018, but there's a lot of streets in my zone that really need work, specifically Worthington, which I drive up every single day. And every day, it really gives my kidneys and my spine a workout. And some of the other streets in that area, like in the Meadowwood area, I was on, was it Roger Road a couple of weeks ago, and it was like riding over Rumble Strip. The street looks good, the appearances, but when you drive down it, well, not Worthington, Roger, when you drive down that, it's, it's like Rumble Strips. And if there's time, money, resources, that, you know, we could kind of get somebody to look at that.
That's our speed control program.
Yeah, I'm sure. Because if you go over 10 miles an hour, it's, it's.
Then it's working, then.
But Worthington's like, there's potholes developing there, and I drive up that every single day. And I, I know the zone, the road you have to take. You know, go to the left, go to the right, miss everything. But I'm just hoping somebody that doesn't know that doesn't like blow out shocks or something, because it's, it's starting to get that bad. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. And I appreciate you keeping the environmental education series going, and, and bring us updates as you can. And I'd like to remind everyone that we've always struggled with getting volunteers to the, the Parks and Rec for that invasive species removal. Excuse me. So, if anyone would like to donate a little bit of their time, it's definitely a worthy cause. Help out the Parks and Rec people, and same time, remove invasive species. It's very important. Eric, you heard, you heard the gentleman? Okay, excellent.
Don Glider, 149 Vista Drive. As a segue on the same topic, for the roads, you know, I, I was, I've been talking to Eric for the last few years about when our road is going to get done. I've been living there for 40 years, and, and the road, you know, he, he was saying 35 years for the ones he's doing this year. I got that beat by five years. So, the, the road's all alligatored, and my neighbor and I go out and throw a bag of cold patch in the potholes every, every once in a while. And I know Eric's doing the best he can with the, the funds he's got available, but looking at Sector 5 that he's working on this year, after he gets through doing the 15 roads he's doing, he's got another 10 that are rated at threes that really ought to get done as well. And I, I think when you're, I know you're taking a, a new look at the budget, and I, I'd like to ask you to pay some attention to finding some way to put some more money into taking care of the roads. And one way to start might be to make sure that all, all of the liquid fuels money goes for road repair instead of buying trucks and salt and traffic lights and, and things like that. You know, that would, that would increase the amount by 50% for starters. But I think it's pretty clear, you know, the people on the Speedway, their, you know, their roads are in terrible are in terrible condition. There's a lot of roads in the township. It's really getting to be a problem, and, and I, I just, uh, would ask you to take a close look at that when you, when you look at the new budget.
Thank you. We're, we're taking a close look at everything. Any more public comment? Okay. So, uh, we'll go to the consent agenda. Mr. Schuster?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's consent agenda is as follows. Item A is approval of the minutes from your February 6, 2020 meeting. Item B is approval of conditional use 2020-01, 299 Jacksonville Road decision in order. This is the memorialization of your decision from the, uh, from your last meeting. Uh, item C is Rosemore Donuts, release number one, from the escrow in the amount of $43,750 as recommended by the engineer. Item D is approval agreement for training services with Major and Mastro. This is a limited scope agreement. Uh, if you recall, uh, Major and Mastro have been here for a number of years. We have phased them out, uh, from working with the finance department. Uh, there's still a little bit of, uh, additional knowledge transfer that has to occur. Uh, this is for a limited engagement to do that. And item E is approval of the Township Manager Employment Agreement.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Five oh. Thank you. Financial report. Uh, Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, if the board is so inclined, I would recommend a motion to approve the supplemental bill list dated February 28, 2020, in the amount of $419,546.33, and the bill list dated February 20, 2020, in the amount of $1,267,530.79.
Is there a motion to approve the bill list?
A motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Five oh. Thank you. Financial statements?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, two statements to really talk about, and, uh, with a big caveat, they are both in draft form as we are reviewing everything. I just mentioned, uh, in the consent agenda, the, uh, agreement to do that knowledge transfer, uh, that's some of the stuff that's holding up the finalization of these numbers. Uh, again, these are preliminary numbers, but as we look at, uh, the end-of-year statement for 2019 for the general fund, uh, we're looking at a deficit that was realized of approximately 1.14 million. Uh, that's against a $2.3 million deficit that was budgeted, so significantly better than what was budgeted. However, it is still a significant deficit, uh, that occurred. Um, revenues in general about $400,000 higher than budgeted. Um, expenditures were approximately $1.1 million lower than budgeted. A big chunk of that was the fact that we didn't do any contingency payment, uh, over to the pension fund. Uh, also, uh, nearly all departments did come in under budget, uh, so a big thanks to all department heads realizing the situation that we are in, uh, and containing costs as much as possible. Uh, all the other funds, um, that, uh, pretty much came in, uh, as expected with, uh, small surpluses. Uh, the Park and Rec Fund did have a deficit of $190,000. Uh, a $210,000 deficit was budgeted. Uh, if you recall, uh, the, the millage for the, uh, the Park and Rec Fund, uh, was increased because, because there was a structural deficit, which has now been addressed, so don't expect that to occur, uh, going forward. Uh, in the golf fund, uh, we are seeing, uh, an operational profit. Uh, if you look at the numbers, don't be deceived, because if you look at the bottom line, it looks like, uh, there was, uh, an extreme profit. That's not the case. What you're seeing is the proceeds which have come in from the debt service for the golf irrigation project. However, there's only been expenditures out for about half of that project, so it skews the numbers a little bit. Just be careful when you look at that. We'll get you the final numbers once everything is tied out, but the golf course, uh, once again, looks to be profitable, uh, for, um, 2019. Uh, moving on to January of 2020, uh, one thing that is different, uh, in the finances this year compared to, uh, recent memory, uh, is the tax anticipation note. Uh, approximately $1.5 million was taken in, uh, for that TAN, you'll see that reflected, uh, in the budget, uh, in the report. Um, they are still going ahead and reassigning bills, so there could be some bills that have been, you know, assigned to January 2020 that, when they look at, might get reclassified back to the previous year, so that's still, they're still going through that process. Uh, in general, um, as Kevin had stated, uh, things are going very well at the golf courses. A great start with the year, uh, with this weather, uh, so things are looking up and up. Uh, besides that, there's really not much more that can be gleaned, uh, from a January report. It's the first month of the year, so you can't really generate any trends in that, but we're working to go ahead and close out, uh, 2019, uh, and then, once, uh, Major and Mastro comes back in, uh, we'll be able to provide, uh, the final numbers on, uh, on January.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. We're looking forward to seeing that, those final numbers, uh, and, uh, we definitely want to thank all our departments for, um, um, a great effort in controlling our costs because, um, we still seem to have a spending problem. So, um, there's no motion?
No, there's no motion.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, move on to, uh, unfinished business? There is no unfinished business? Okay, new business. Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, there was an agenda that was put out earlier, um, with item A for an appointment to a board, uh, that has been, uh, removed for this evening, uh, so the first item that's up for consideration, uh, is a request for authorization to advertise for the curb ramp installation contract for the 2020, uh, road program. Uh, Eric gave the presentation. Uh, the bid would have a base, uh, base bid of 50, uh, curb ramps, and, uh, the alternate on there would be an additional 14. As he stated, a very significant number of curb ramps, which does eat into the, uh, the amount of funds available for paving.
Okay, is there a, a motion to authorize the advertisement for the curb ramps?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Uh, any questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, five oh. Uh, okay, next?
Next up is continuing with the road program, the request to authorize the advertisement for the road milling contract, uh, for the, uh, road improvement plan.
Okay, uh, motion to authorize the advertisement of roadway milling?
Motion.
Second? Any questions or comments from the board? From the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Five oh. Okay. And last?
And last, uh, is actually to award a bid. Uh, every year for the materials needed for the road program, uh, we do a bid along with many other municipalities through the Bucks County Consortium. Uh, the two materials that, uh, we would be awarding for our program, uh, would be SuperPave and Number 2A Stone Mix. So the bids, uh, the low bids that were received, uh, that we're recommending, uh, awarding this evening, uh, is for a SuperPave, nine and a half millimeter wearing, 7,000 tons at a price of $46.46 to Miller Materials, and also for Number 2A Stone Mix, 400 tons at $9 to Eureka Stone Quarry. Uh, quarry, if you look in the actual bid matrix, uh, you will notice there was a lower bidder on the Number 2A Stone Mix. However, that bidder qualified, that would, they would only deliver to certain municipalities, uh, that was inside their range, and Warmminster was not one of them. That's why we're unable to go with the lower bid.
Okay. Uh, and this was the next, the next bid up?
Correct. That was the second lowest bid, or the first lowest bid that we could actually accept.
That we could deliver to Warmminster. Okay. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion? Second? Any questions or comments? Public? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Okay. Professional reports. Mr. Schuster?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you have my written report. If there's any questions, uh, a couple of things I'll, I'll point out. Uh, number one, I just mentioned that the 2019 audit is in progress, uh, so Finance Department and the auditor is working through that right now. Um, Warmminster Community Park bidding is open, uh, so we look forward to receiving those bids. Uh, that bid opening should be in a couple of weeks. We'll report back. I would remind everyone that this is being done under the responsible contractor ordinance, so this is going to be a multi-step process. At the April meeting, you'll have the recommendation. Uh, at that point, you have to wait until, uh, you'll, you'll take a vote, uh, for preliminary a, approval, and then you have to wait another month to go ahead and go through all the paperwork, all the verifications, and make sure that there's no one contesting it, uh, so the final action would occur in May. Concurrent with that, we do anticipate, uh, having discussion about financing. Uh, and the last thing I'll talk about, uh, since everyone else is, is obviously the coronavirus. Um, we're well aware of what's going on, and I'm not going to, you know, spend a lot of time because there's a lot of people talking about it. The only thing I'll, I would just say is, the best thing everyone could do right now is wash your hands. Uh, spend 20 seconds every time you wash your hands. Keep on washing them. Use hand sanitizer. That's the best thing that everyone can do right now, uh, the best protection from the coronavirus, and quite frankly, from any other, uh, any other flu or, or cold. So that's, that's my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Very good advice.
Thank you.
Solicitors' report. Mr. Flagler?
Everyone has my report. If anyone has any specific questions, we've had executive session. We discussed a number of, um, legal litigation matters and, uh, real estate matters. If anyone has any questions, I'm here to answer it.
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Flagler.
Thank you, Mr. Flagler.
Uh, okay, where we go? Engineer, uh, Mr. Kennard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you have our March Engineers Report. Uh, Mr. Schuster mentioned about the bids, um, the bid opening for the park projects March 19th, uh, and then your road program bid opening is, uh, March 25th, and both will be considered at your April meeting. At your, the only upcoming, uh, land development project won't be at April. Um, there's nothing scheduled for your, at least right now, unless something else comes in, but in May, uh, the office, uh, building, uh, 1020 West Bristol Road, it's called Mara Project, um, you've already, they've already grant, received preliminary approval, and they'll be looking for final approval. They had to work out some items with our office and also Penn Dot, and I anticipate, uh, that review being done here, uh, in April, and then you'll see that in your main meeting. One other comment is, uh, we're working pretty close with closing out the Long Stretth, uh, s, uh, school property, uh, that residential development, so, um, I don't know very much, uh, on, for your agenda, but, uh, we're pretty close to closing that project out as well. And I also had an update that, um, I'm not, I guess within the last couple of weeks, we were notified, and I don't know if Amanda has any further information, but 29 of the 42 lots over at the Dowsters Farm, the 12th Sunday Murns Road Development, have already been sold.
Really?
Twenty-nine of the 42 lots.
Wow.
In two weeks, so, um, so, uh, and that's my update. Uh, I don't entertain any questions you have.
I don't have any. Anyone else have any questions?
Thank you for your report, Mr. Kennard. I just have one, one question about the Dowster Farm. What is, what's, uh, the norm, the price, typical price that of the homes at Dowster Farms?
That I don't know, but I bet you Amanda does.
Just curious.
They're starting around 460, according to that Toll Brothers website, but I would assume they're probably selling for higher than that, once everybody adds in all the add-ons and upgrades.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Township manager announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unless there's any objection, we will cancel the March 19th meeting. Uh, Brad Fox, uh, will be on the April agenda to come in and, and talk about the Brad Fox run. Uh, that organization will be here. Uh, also, we anticipate having a, uh, a small football team in. Uh, we recently won a championship, uh, to be recognized. Uh, the ordinances, which you, uh, authorized advertisement of this evening, would be on the agenda. Uh, awarding the bids, uh, for the roadwork would be on the agenda, uh, as well as the Warmminster Community Park bid awards, uh, which I just outlined. Also, as I mentioned earlier, uh, we anticipate having the first discussion about financing for Warmminster Community Park, uh, and most likely PFM would come in and do a presentation about, uh, some options that, uh, you could do. We want to do that concurrently because at that point, we'll know what the actual bids are, and we can have some hard numbers to, to talk over.
Okay.
But that's what I anticipate for the April meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can I ask one question? Um, I know on the meeting that we had proposed for the 19th was pretty much dedicated to fire service, so that we're not, we're going to do that at a future meeting?
So the intention...
I know it revolved around the SAFER grant.
Yeah. So the SAFER grant has a 30-day window, and we'd never know exactly when it's coming. Historically, it's been in March, and so we thought that do that March meeting, uh, the March 19th meeting would be the optimal time. It still hasn't come out, which means that if the board wished to move forward with that, you could deal with that at the April meeting. So there's really no reason to have a March meet, a March 19th meeting.
Are we still on target to, to applying for the SAFER grant? I know we've had discussion in the past.
That's going to be up to the board, you know, as you were, the, the board previously did hire, uh, a consultant to go ahead and prepare that. That work is, is ongoing. Uh, that's all going to be, uh, brought up to the board, and it's up to you whether or not you're going to move forward.
So if that window opens, we could even add a second meeting in April if need be?
If need be.
That window opens.
Yes, just as we were going to do for the March.
Okay.
Yes.
Got it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schuster. Um, we'll open it up to public comment once more.
Evening. Uh, Chris McSane, 847 Christie Court. Um, I underst, we already hired a consultant to look at the new budget. Um, I believe his fee, half of his season paid upfront. Do we have a, a timeframe as, or when his recommendations will be released to the public?
Um, I expect, uh, in April. We, we will be having these conversations in April. Yes.
Okay, because there is a timeframe right before we can, you guys can amend the budget? So it will be before then?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Yes, Bob Welsh, Howell Avenue, 565, Warminster, PA. I'd like to piggyback on what Mark said. We had an awful fire on St. Charles. I think the house was a total wreck. We also, I know it's not Warminster, but in Southampton, had a fire where the woman that lived there passed away in the fire. Where we stand on paid firefighters?
Not sure yet. That's about all I can say. We understand what's going on. We understand, you know, that the volunteers are dwindling rapidly, but we're also trying to figure out how to pay for it. So that, you know, just throw, throw that right on top of the pile.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so we'll move on. Oh, wait, okay. Oh, no, I thought, I didn't know where you were going, sorry.
Hi, everybody, how you doing? Donna Hacker, 1075 Birch Road. I recall in one of the meetings, Mr. Chairman, you were saying that the police contract has expired, and is there negotiations on that? Or we have any plans?
Well, yeah, we definitely have plans, because we need to, we need to approve the contract.
Just was curious how we're working that out.
While it's still in negotiation, a gentleman behind you asked that question, and-
I must have missed, came in a little late.
It's labor negotiations, and labor negotiations are between the parties, and they're necessarily secret, because they're, the parties are negotiating. And it's, and obviously, both sides would like to come to an agreement, and they're working on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Second question, probably unrelated. I came home last week, I have a cornered property, and I saw a lot of yellow markers all around my curbing, and I don't know what that means. Can somebody enlighten me?
Well, they're, they're markouts. I don't know what the particular color means.
Yellow lines.
Which, what's yellow for?
Yellow is gas.
Yellow is gas.
Okay.
That's correct.
What does that mean, though? Are they replacing gas lines?
That means, well, I don't know about that, but what's happening is someone's doing work in the area, they called to get the mark, to get the location, and people have to come mark out where the utilities are, to make sure that whatever work they're doing, they don't hit a line.
Okay.
That's all that that is.
Because I just did a lot of concrete work, and I was saying, oh my God. I was like-
It's always the case.
Yeah, of course, especially when you see the marks after they pave, it's a wonderful shot, too, you know.
I remember a few years back, they paved Centennial Road, and not like six months later, Verizon or somebody came in, I'm like, it's incredible, digging it up.
So everyone knows the standard, red, green.
Another question.
I forgot something. This actually happened to be speaking of concrete. I remember, I guess when the township did the ramps, the handicap ramps, because I have a cornered property, when I went to go do my concrete, I said to the township, I said, I want you to look at the whole thing. It's cheaper to do it in a whole bundle than little patchwork. So they made all the recommendations, and they recommended that I had to replace the handicap ramp that was installed a year and a half before, because it sunk. And I was like, wait, the township put that in, and now a year and a half later, I'm replacing it. So whoever you, you award the contract to, let them offer you some kind of something, so it doesn't put it on the homeowner. I mean, settlement, who knows? Cornered properties, I get hit with the plows, they make the snow piles 10 feet high, they rip up the curbs, everything. Cornered properties get abused by snow plows, but to have a ramp that was put in a year and a half prior, and I had to replace it, I don't know why. So when you're doing that bidding and all that, just keep that in mind.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Anyone else? All right. So we will go to supervisors' comments. Do you want to go first?
Sure, why not? I have, I have a few. I can't believe we're going to get out of here this early, something's bound to happen. I have a few. I wanted to start off by thanking Dr. David Ball over at the school district. It ties into our park project that we're doing this summer. We're going to have to cancel a whole lot of events that are going on in the park this summer because of the construction. Dr. Ball's been incredibly gracious with use of their facilities. Number one, the Operation Ward 57, the annual one there, they were going to have to postpone that. Dr. Dave has been gracious enough to let, let them use the high school and the track, particularly the track, because they're all handicapped disabled, they're all amputees, they're there, disabled veterans. And he's also agreed to let our Park and Rec have their bouncy run at William Tenet High School. He's been incredibly gracious, and I want to thank him, I really appreciate what he's doing for us. I also want to congratulate Mr. Schuster, it was my pleasure to vote for your employment agreement tonight, and I hope you're here for a good long time. I was, and I really think you should take another shot at golf this year. I know you gave, you gave it up.
You lost cause.
Yeah, I really think, you have nice clubs, I really think you should take another shot at it, right Craig? He should.
No comment.
Take another shot at it this year.
It's not working out, usually people buy new clubs.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't work, right Todd? I tried that, I tried that, it doesn't work. I also want to wish everyone a happy St. Patrick's Day, it's coming up, and remind everyone to please don't drink and drive, the chief doesn't want any overnight guests if he doesn't need them. Take an Uber ride and have a good time, drink some green beer. And the last one I have to get to, and she's not here tonight, but my lovely wife, it's our 27th wedding anniversary today.
Congratulations.
She's not, she's not here today, but I will talk out of school a little bit. Her mother didn't think we'd make 27 days. As a matter of fact, we're riding in the Memorial Day Parade two years ago, I said, look at you now, you're the first lady of Warminster, look at you now.
There you go.
But, yeah, yeah, we love her to death, and 27 years, I didn't grow up till I was 40, she says 45, but I, hopefully we'll have another 50 years together, but happy anniversary.
Yes, absolutely, congratulations.
I know she wanted to spend it with you guys tonight.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
She was very looking forward.
What better way?
We're going to go out and have a nice dinner tomorrow night. That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
I'd like to thank everybody that came out for their public comment tonight, to make sure that they were able to be heard, so we can take everything into consideration. Also, I'd like to wish Mark and Erica a happy anniversary of spending his evening with us.
Wouldn't have it any other way.
That's it.
Yes, happy anniversary, Mark and Erica. And I'd also like to remind you that we have a drug safe in the police lobby, and if you have old drugs and expired drugs that you're not using, or people have deceased and you still have old drugs in the cabinet, get rid of them, bring them over and put them in the, in the safe in the police lobby. And we also have push out the pusher signs, they're in the trunk of my car right now, but if anybody wants some push out the pusher signs, I'm going to make sure that the police get them, and they have them in the lobby, too. So if you see any activity of drug pushing in the neighborhood, or in the parking lots or anywhere else, call 215-345-3784, and let's get rid of these guys. We don't need them in Warminster.
Thank you.[1666.97]